Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this, the regular meeting of the Geneva 304 School Board for Monday, October 27th, 2025. I'm delighted to have everyone here. This is the best house we've had in quite a while. So Bonnie, could you call the roll?
Paul Ralinski.
Here.
Molly Ansari.
Here.
Stephanie Bellino.
Here.
Larry Corbeau.
Here.
De'Anchroya Dethman this evening, Jackie Forrester.
Here.
Willard Hook.
Here.
Thank you. And Molly Ansari will lead us in the pledge. The flag is right over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you wish to address the board or want to register your attendance, there's an attendance sheet in the hall that you can sign in a speaking form if you'd like to speak. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the regular session of October 14th and the executive session of October 14th. Bonnie, have you received any corrections? Does anyone have any at this time? Motion to approve?
Some.
Second.
Molly Ansari.
Aye.
Stephanie Bellino.
Aye.
Jackie Forrester.
Aye.
Willard Hook.
Aye.
Paul Ralinski.
Aye.
Larry Corbeau.
Aye. Item three, recognition awards, presentations, and public hearings. Number one is the Traditional Excellence GHS students. And, boys golf, national merit commended, girls tennis. Principal Tom Rogers will present the students to the board.
Mr. Rogers, you had a brief little respite of acknowledging all the great things that happened at Geneva High School, but we're back at it now. So, board, as a reminder, we're gonna take our step out around front as Mr. Rogers brags about some of these awesome students. And then, students, after he's had an opportunity to talk about you, I'll invite you up. And one at a time, start on this end with Dr. Ansari, and shake everybody's hands, and then we'll do a big photo op at the end while we recognize each group. Really excited to have everybody back. We missed this for a while, so glad to have you here. Take it away, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Dr. Barrett. We weren't staying away on purpose. It just takes a little while to stack up the honors, right? So, as was mentioned, we have three groups to announce tonight. We're gonna start with our boys golf team, who qualified for the state tournament as a team. And before I introduce the players, I'll just state that they had a fantastic season, finishing second in the Duquesne Conference. And then, when the IHSA State Series started, we took second place in the IHSA St. Charles North Regional. That finish qualified them for the IHSA sectional, where we then, believe it or not, traveled to Moline, Illinois. Nice local course. But our boys did fantastic there. It was an exciting match to follow. There's an IHSA app, and it's a lot of fun, but very nerve-wracking to follow all day long, trying to figure out, are they gonna make it, are they not? And they actually tied for third, but because we had a fifth team member who placed better than, now I'm trying to remember who we tied with, Mr. Hatzell, help me out. As we go east, their fifth player did not score as well as ours did, so we were able to break the tie and advance to the state tournament as a team. I'll talk about the state tournament in just a second. Let's now meet the team members, starting with Dylan Anderson. Should be noted that, pretty typical that golf is pretty well-dressed for this event. Glenn Clermont. Ian Goodfellow. Robbie Keller. Noah Kettlewell. Blake Makowski. Logan Novae. Ethan Olds. Blake Olson. Will Quizling. Nick Torrance. And Matt Trimble. Boys are coached by assistant coaches Troy Potzick and, come on up, Troy. And Esther Crandall. And our boys head coach is Mr. Eric Hatzell. So, as I mentioned, our third-place finish in sectionals qualified for the team for the IHSA State Tournament, held down in Bloomington, Illinois, at a course called The Den. The boys, there are 12 teams that qualify for the first day. I'll be honest, I'm puzzled as to why this happens, but after the first day, they cut down from 12 to eight. So if you're not in the top eight after day one, you go home. But our boys didn't want to go home. They finished seventh after day one, which qualified them for Saturday, and then moved up two more spots on Saturday into fifth place in the state of Illinois. Congratulations, boys. All right, guys, we're gonna squeeze together for the official photo.
Mr. Rogers, I think that's the first time in a long time we have had 100% attendance. Oh, sorry, stole your thunder, sorry.
Mr. Hatzell pointed out, they usually do have 100% attendance at these, so thank you very much for everybody's dedication, and congratulations again on outstanding season. Thanks for being here. All right, guys, we're gonna go back over towards the door. Thank you. Okay, our next recognition tonight is for a group of students who have earned National Merit Commended status in the National Merit Scholarship Corporation PSAT test competition. So back in the fall of 2024, this current group of students took the PSAT at Geneva High School. Approximately 1.5 million students across the country took the PSAT. There's a two-tiered system of honoring students for their accomplishments on that test. There are national merit semifinalists that are announced first, and there's approximately 16,000 of those, and those students advance to finalist status typically in February. The next group that we're gonna honor tonight is National Merit Commended students. They represent another 34,000 students on top of those 16,000 semifinalists. So, across the country, approximately 50,000 students are being honored out of that 1.5 million. Now, you might think, that's an awfully large number. But when you do the math, it puts these students in the top approximately 4% of all seniors in the country. So needless to say, these National Merit Commended students are very smart. Congratulations to all of you, and now let's meet our National Merit Commended students, who we are honoring tonight, and they will also be honored at senior awards night in the spring. So please congratulate. Emmeline Anderson. Alexa Koski. Catherine Costello. Ethan Ellis. Haley Henson. Riley Heskin, who notified me today that she's unable to be here. Kirill Lunin. Jonathan Papasavastos. Ben Schmidt. And Samanj Trapati. Thank you to the five of you for being here, and congratulations on this outstanding honor as National Merit Commended students. All right. Thank you again, and congratulations again. Okay, next, tonight we're gonna honor two Geneva High School girls tennis players who combined to form quite the doubles tandem at the conference meet as well as the IHSA State Series. Let's introduce Chloe Cornea first. And her partner, Letty Klein. So Chloe and Letty, as I said, earned fourth place at the Duquesne Conference Tournament. They then competed at the St. Charles East Sectional Meet, where they earned fourth place, and the top four teams qualified for the IHSA State Tennis Tournament, to be held up in the northwest suburbs. So last Thursday morning, I had the pleasure of going to Palatine High School. It was a beautiful, warm morning. I'm kidding, it was freezing cold. But the girls did a great job. I wanna, I wanna mention, first of all, they're the first girls tennis players to qualify for state in several years. And they are also the first team to win a match at state in many years. So the girls were matched up against a highly-ranked Highland Park team in match number one at 8:00 a.m. We then played against Sandberg High School, and that's where we earned our first state tournament win in several years. Help me girls, I think it was 6-2, 6-3? No. 6-1, 6-2, thank you. And then, that allowed the girls to advance to their third match of the day, where unfortunately they lost to Stevenson, but it was a fantastic run for the girls. It was a lot of fun to watch. Very competitive tennis was played at the IHSA sectional, and as well on Thursday morning at Palatine High School. So congratulations, girls, on your great accomplishment. Before they go, I think it's also pretty neat that Letty is already here at the meeting to do something else important tonight. So it's great to see athletes being true student athletes. Chloe, not to sell you short at all, I just noticed, obviously, that Letty is here to give a presentation on Red Ribbon Week, so just wanted to note that. And that happens a lot, and I'm certain it's why some of our National Merit Commended students weren't here tonight, because they're involved in other things, which is what the email from one of the students indicated. I also want to make sure to mention that the girls were coached this year by Mr. Zach Evans, teacher at the high school in our science department, but unfortunately, he was unable to be here this evening as well. So congratulations to the girls and Coach Evans. Thanks a lot for being here.
All right, continuing on, the next item on the agenda, GHS Students Against Destructive Decisions. Timothy McQuestion, Letty Klein, and GHS sponsors, Lisa Meister and Kerrigan Smith. Happy to see you all here.
While they're stepping up, I would note that at the last board meeting, the board formally approved a resolution in support of Red Ribbon Week in preparation for today. So the board approved that resolution, and I think is excited to hear from you all about this important topic. So thanks for being here, everybody.
Thank you all for having us. I'm Lisa Meister.
I'm Kerrigan Smith.
And we are co-sponsors of the SAD Club, which, as Larry mentioned, there's Students Against Destructive Decisions. We, it started off as a club that was mostly about, like, drunk driving, back in the 80s, when this was first, you know, started. And then it evolved into Students Against Drinking and Drugs, and then it evolved into Destructive Decisions, which is more encompassing of the kinds of things that teens are facing these days. And as a club, we, we've kind of made a shift where we talk more about, like, meeting kids where they're at, instead of, you know, just always saying, like, just say no, just say no, just say no. We know that that's not always a message that kids are gonna hear. And so we've kind of taken a slightly different approach, and we did this last year as well. I know Mrs. Ansari and I have had conversations about, you know, harm reduction, and looking at the decisions the kids are making on the weekend, and how can we be a more open and inviting environment for them as adults, that they can turn to us in some of those hard times and hard decisions. So, Kerrigan, you wanna introduce the?
We've got Letty, who we've all just met, and Timothy, to talk about, from their perspective, what the club is about and what it means to them.
When you talk, make, get nice and, nice and close to the microphone if you can, 'cause they gotta hear you on TV.
Good evening. My name is Timothy McQuestion.
I'm Letty.
And I would like to thank you for your time for this meeting, to recognize the importance of Red Ribbon Week. The nation celebrates this week each, each year to send the message to the community... How about just hold it? Okay. To send this message to the community about taking responsibility for our health and making thoughtful decisions regarding, regarding substance abuse.
So in the past, drug prevention programs centered around, like Ms. Meister said, just say no, and fear tactics. And we know from years and years of research that those strategies have been largely ineffective. For some teens, developing refusal skills is effective, and teaching, and teaching them how to analyze the influences around them is a useful skill. For others, teens, a strictly just say no approach isn't as helpful as talking to them about harm reduction methods. If our goal to help teens, is to help teens and youth and young adults move the needle towards healthier outcomes, we must recognize that each person might be in a different starting place. And we need to approach this topic with a level of empathy and compassion, instead of judgment. So, we need more teens, we need to meet teens where they're at and talk about things relevant to their lives, using evidence-based strategies. Otherwise, teens won't feel like they can go to adults in their lives with concerns they may have about themselves or their friends. We need to help teens who want to take steps towards positive change in their lives, even if those changes are small steps at first.
In drug prevention, we know, we want to deliver the message, we don't want to deliver a pessimistic message. However, we also don't want to be dismissive of the harm that the, we don't want to be dismissive of harm reduction strategies that are evidence-based. The National Drug Control Strategy outlines various tactics are needed, are needed in drug, drug education. A school district in Washington State describes their strategy as right service, right time, right child approach, explaining that sometimes taking smaller steps towards healthier outcomes will help students build trust and rapport with adults in their community to help them be able to go farther and make bigger and more lasting changes further on. The major principles of harm reductions include care, support, connections, and respect to foster the trust and rapport needed for someone to reach out for assistance.
This year's National Red Ribbon Week theme is "Life is a Puzzle. Solve It Drug-Free." To me, this means we want to be able to incorporate healthy problem-solving skills to handle life's challenges, instead of clouding our judgment with substances, with substances when life gets hard, which can seem like a cheat code to a hard puzzle or a hard day. Statistics show that teens are more involved in their community and have a sense of belonging and stability are less likely to engage in risky behaviors. In trying to make an impactful campaign with students, we highlight the six principles that help facilitate a healthy lifestyle. These principles are?
Finding a natural high that is your passion. Through building up sports, arts, and musical-related extracurriculars, we are able to, we are able to give a wide net of support to a majority of students. Surrounding yourselves, or number two, surrounding yourself with positive peer influences. Making sure that voices like SAD Club are heard, and letting people know that they aren't alone, even if they don't want to reach out for help themselves. Number three, finding a positive mentor to encourage you. Creating those extracurriculars with solid coaches, teachers, and directors, and club leaders can help many kids talk to someone outside of a parent or guardian. Four, having a firm, having a firm belief in your talents and abilities. Kids don't just need a mentor encouraging, kids don't just need a mentor encouraging themselves, they need, they need, they need mentors who are, who are going to lift them up and allow them to be as confident of their skills and talents. Number five, setting goals for yourself and your future. Knowing what you want for the future is a great way to block out things that can limit you in the future. Knowing what you want to do can let you say no to things that will inevitably harm that plan for yourself. Building resilience to help, to help you get through challenges in life. Knowing what is out there is a great way for kids, for kids to stay healthy. Health classes, like Ms. Meister's, can explain what drugs do to the body, and are a great way to build up resistance to drugs early on.
And at the high school level, we're helping students build assets where they give back to their community through our annual food drive. We are also working with our GTV students to promote healthy decision-making and being brave and standing up to peer pressure. We are encouraging more connections between clubs at school to increase positive social networks among teens and positive mentors.
As a community, we can impact by providing fun, healthy things to do through our park districts, city planning, and school district extracurriculars. So teens have a safe and fun activities to participate in with their friends, and allow adult supervision and guidance. As a parent, we encourage you to talk, to talk about healthy decision-making under pressure within your own families, and encourage open dialogue with your kids. Talk often in your homes about what your kids can do if they are ever worried about a friend, or if they need some advice on how to handle a situation themselves. Teens often feel that they can't go to parents on topics that, teens often feel that they can't go to, can't go to parents on topics because they are concerned that their parents will have a knee-jerk reaction, and protect them with bubble wrap. As a parent, your teens need to know that they can approach you and ask questions without judgment. So they know that when heavy stuff comes up, you already have the rapport and dialogue going with a teen, and are able to help them handle life-or-death situations with, when they need the help.
These are just some of many ways the adults and teens can work together to get a handle on reducing harm and increasing discussions. We thank you for your time and attention to this important annual week of drug prevention and awareness. Thank you.
I think it's wonderful that you're learning coping techniques for the things that we all face as we go through life. And as a parent, and all, it makes me really happy to see you doing this important work. Thank you very much. And Lisa, thank you for coming out, 'cause I know you haven't been feeling well lately. Next item on the agenda is Middle School SEL Presentation, Terry Blue and Dave Carley.
Yeah, well, they're, it should be on, it's on AV mute right now, right? So the remote should be there if you have Windows K and then AV muted. Well, Mr. Carley and Mr. Blue are getting set up, just wanna welcome them up here. You know, they've been working with their staff at the building level on a variety of different topics. The board had, had a lot of discussion about some of their work in the area of executive function, executive functioning. And while they were having some of those conversations, they were also having some of these conversations about social emotional learning, and trying to achieve one of those goals we've talked about a lot, which is making us more consistent across the campus. And so that's what they're here to talk about today, is, you know, the, the work that they've kind of embarked on and are doing together as, as a campus-wide team in terms of social emotional learning, and how that structure is going. What'd you do, Todd?
Beats are good.
Swing it. It's coming.
Oh, here we go.
There you go. 6985.
Wait for the tubes to warm up.
There you go. Oh, jeez. Are you already connected, Todd?
I'm not.
Oh, no, okay.
I disconnected.
Now, I'll remind you both too, you can make the microphone close to, keep the microphone close to your mouth.
That's good. Well, thank you for this opportunity to talk about Middle School SEL. We'll say SEL, it's Social Emotional Learning. It is a mandate by the state of Illinois. It's been going on at the middle schools for many, many years. But what we did this last past year is, we had a committee with learning and teaching, and our assistants, assistant principals, and our dean at the middle school, and some teachers, and GA reps, and we looked at the different programs out there, and we do use... And we do use Second Step here at the middle school. And what we did was we upgraded to a online version that has videos and presentations, and we'll go through and talk about it. So what's new? Basically, we have weekly time assigned for social emotional learning at the middle schools. Both buildings are in the same schedule throughout the school year. The first day of the week, either on Monday, if we're not in session on Monday, it'll be Tuesday, where we have a time built into our schedule. Again, every Monday or first day of the week, it's 29 minutes long and are set aside for social emotional learning. It's different now than it's been past because in the past, it was built into a class. It was LA class, a math class, or science, they taught the SEL lesson. This year, we are dedicating time on first day of the week. And every certified staff in the building has a group of students or assigned a group of students. These students, the class size ranges from 13 to 15 per certified staff member. So keeping our numbers low, so the teachers could get to know the students within that grade level. Again, we're using the Second Step program, which is the updated version. Why did we change? In the past, we used the older version of Second Step. The newer version, as I said, has more lessons and better content, presentations, videos. Previously, each main content area would be given two days throughout the year, taking away from that curriculum area, the math, science, or say, LA period. With new Second Step, there are more lessons that we're going through. And Mr. Blue will go over the different lessons. And then moving to the Monday schedule on campus allows every class period on that day to be, students be in every class period. Where does the time come from? What we did was we took four minutes off each class period for that, to have the SEL period. Again, it allows all content areas to be, to meet on that Monday or the SEL scheduled day. It's going to happen all the way until April, and April, April 27th will be the last lesson for Second Step. And then going into May, we'll be back on our Monday-through-Friday schedule on campus.
All right, so it's probably nice that we came during Red Ribbon Week because a lot of what we're going to talk about in Second Step kind of goes down to like making good choices, which is again, what you guys all talked about a little bit ago. So we could probably leave and skip the rest. So there's really, at each level, there's four main units plus another one that I'll talk about in a second. So like, first unit's mindset and goals. And so at each level, for the first four, no, first like five lessons are like mindset and goals, but it's different because each grade level's a little bit different, right? And then developing a positive sense of self, which is where we're at now, we just shifted into that unit now. Thoughts, emotions, and decisions, which there's a lot of emotions at middle school level, as you well know, if you've had some middle schoolers. And then managing relations and social conflict, which again, is something that is really, and I've always felt like that's, middle school's where you learn a lot about how to manage relationships and conflict. And so it's nice that we have a solid curriculum to help us do that. There's also six bullying lessons that we use that are separate than the units. And so what we decided to do was seemed wrong, like put them all at the front. And then it's like, great, there are kids that are loaded up the front for the bullying information, but then it's not touched on again. And it seemed even worse to put it at the back end, where it's like, all right, bully each other until the last six weeks of school, please. That seems wrong too. So what we did is we took them and sprinkled them at the end of each major unit, our two bullying lesson units. So that way, it's kind of touched on throughout the year. And you know, this is our first year doing it because again, as Mr. Carley alluded to, there is a lot more content than what we'd done before with Second Step. So we'll see if that was a good decision, we liked it, or not. So we just finished up our first two bullying lessons the last couple of weeks, and then we'll do it again like December, January, February, and March, and I'll be wrapped up with that. So that kind of covers the main content areas. So again, how is it different from one level to the other? Well, here's a couple examples that we pulled, okay? In Unit One, which again was about, you know, goal setting and things like that, in sixth grade, the lessons, there's a lesson about breaking down your goals. Now, on that same day, seventh grade was about overcoming obstacles, you know, because, you know, all right, if over time, we keep with this curriculum, in sixth grade, you're doing a lot about setting goals, seventh grade's about how you're working toward them by overcoming obstacles. Eighth grade, how do you motivate yourself to reach your goals? So all those lessons are happening on the same day, but you know, around the same umbrella topic, but different based on the grade level. Kind of makes sense. And then I pulled for Unit Three, you know, sixth grade, managing your emotions, okay? You know, seventh grade's about reframing the situation. So you know, a lot of times, we go down a dark hole when we see something that's a conflict that we don't like, instead of trying to reframe it and realizing, hey, this might be good for us, you know, that's what we need kids to learn how to do, right? It's like, you know, turn the negative into a positive kind of thing. I'm sure it's more complicated than that, but it's in Unit Three, and we haven't covered that. And then eighth grade has strategies for managing your stress. So again, all those seem really related to each other, but the higher level stuff is happening in the eighth grade and a little bit lower at the sixth grade level. So now, you might be wondering, a couple of things about this is what's nice about what we're going to be doing, I'll get to this slide in a second, is that we're kind of, we're focused on some of those functional skills that kids need, that are really about managing emotions, managing relationships. And for those of you who have, you know, known that, you know, for a few years, South and North attacks functional skills a little bit differently in a couple of ways. And we were talking about functional skills like organization and things like that. But when you look at like, goal setting, well, right there, you're starting with the most important functional skill kids need to know. Because if you don't do goal setting, why am I bothering being organized? Why am I bothering doing my homework? None of those things matter, right? And so what we've done this year is said, there's not time to do this and do some complicated organizational plan that's outside of this. Instead, we're going to see, how does this curriculum lead us through those functional skills? And let's focus on, you know, when it comes to like organizational things, those are the things that make more sense to embed in the regular classroom. Like, we were doing the opposite. We were doing embedding this stuff and saying, hey, math teacher, embed it into a math lesson somehow. Now we're pulling this out and saying, let's do this in small groups, and let's embed more about the organizational things into our common practices in the classroom, if that makes sense, okay? And then the other thing we've talked about is some of these lessons are going to be longer than others, shorter than others, you know, like, you know, like, there's, you know, and Second Step's great because they give you a few like time fillers that relate to the topic. So if you, your group wasn't chatty, and they, you need to kind of drag it out of them a little bit more, it gives you a couple of things. But I think what we're going to find over time is, like, are there lessons that are traditionally shorter that we could then say, okay, hey, you know what, then? This is perfect time on those shorter days, we're cleaning lockers at this grade level because that's something that we need to help kids learn how to do, or whatever it might be. We all learn over time what's available by, you know, it's 29 minutes. It's not like miracles can happen, but we're going to do our best, right? So what are we going to do for the rest of the year? We're going to collect some feedback from the staff, see how this year went. I think it's going really great so far. We're, every Monday, we've assigned ourselves to be in the classroom for Second Step because that way, we're more prepared to talk to you about what the curriculum looks like, and we can like speak from knowledge. And so, but the teachers are doing great. And I think they really enjoy that smaller setting of like 13, 15 kids that they're getting to know well. What's also nice is we move away from teams at the middle school level, is now that creates like, there's a connected person to you that's not there trying to say, now learn some math, learn some reading, learn some writing, you know, this is somebody who's like, learn, help us learn how you're going to become a good person. And you know, that's something that we always looked out for with middle school teams. So we'll keep collecting that feedback from the teachers. We'll modify the plans, adopt the plan based on the feedback, you know, if, whether or not we, you know, change some things up, like where the bullying lessons fits and things like that. But we're, for the time being, Second Step, we think is the right answer for us. And we'll just figure out in our implementation, what we got to tweak and make a little bit better. So with that, I think, I don't have another slide. So any questions that we might need?
How are we communicating this to parents? And what are we sharing about the lessons? And then maybe asking them to reinforce or just giving them the information? So when they're having these conversations with their kids, they can be like, oh yeah, I know you guys are talking about that. This is how I can ask the question. This is how I can have the lesson. I know in elementary, for up until maybe this year, we were sent home like worksheets that were, your kid worked on this today. You can calm down by taking deep breaths, like that kind of stuff. So I assume it's different, but is there some communication to parents in the same way?
You know, yeah, beginning of school year, we did the basic communication, bringing everybody up to speed on what we're doing and how that's going to be structured with the, you know, the timing and all that kind of thing. Being the first year, we haven't dug into like communicating home a lot from, you know, week to week or even month to month, like, hey, here's what unit we're on and things like that. But that's probably a good thing for us to look at with our newsletters and trying to send home messages of like, yeah, September, we covered planning, you know, or making a plan. And so, hey, share with your kid how you approach your work week and how you make your plan to accomplish the week, or something like that, right? Making those connections at home. So that's probably a good idea.
Yeah, I think a lot of times what we see in school, parents are often dealing with the same things at home with the kids. And they're like pulling their hair out, trying to be like, what am I supposed to do about this? So if they're like, oh, I know we set some goals, like I can follow up on those goals or we can talk about that or use the same steps. So helping each other out in a way.
Thank you for this presentation. I think it's really great. I know you have a near collecting staff feedback, is there plans to collect student feedback?
That's something that, yeah, we'll take under consideration and kind of see what lessons worked and what they thought of each lessons. Again, being the first year, and we want to just go through it and kind of see where we're at. And yeah, we'll look at anything that comes our way, we're ready to go with.
So I have a question, and I just want to make sure I understand. Two years ago, at one of the middle schools, we set a pilot program to help our young students become more effective and learn organization and prepare for homework and prepare for how they leave, once they leave school, to make them get prepared for the next day. This, I assume, and we changed, that was a day, that was a daily issue, right? So you took, out of every period, you took days up. Here, we've, I assume that has been done away with, or is that still ongoing?
So that was at South. And so at South, right, we've dissolved that plan and are going with that, embedding those things into the regular classroom time. So rather than, we did that at the end of seventh period.
Right.
Rather than at the end of seventh period, everybody break out your assignment notebook, let's make sure, let's portray the website, project the website, make sure everybody's got all their assignments down. Do you have what you need to go home? That kind of mentality. Instead, we're going with, all right, so every class period, teacher says, okay, let's break out the assignment notebook, let's make sure you got what you need from my class in there. And you know, we'll address it that way. And then like things like locker clean-out binder clean-out, things like that, that we used to do during that time. The teachers know, okay, so at the end of the unit on the Civil War, social studies teacher's going to say, okay, we're done with that unit, let's go through, find all our Civil War stuff, let's take that out, binder's cleaner now. And you know, we got some other strategies of locker things and things like that. But right, the idea was to try and have a uniform time, but when we broke it down and started to talk about what do we do about this, it's, well, we're stealing a couple minutes for this, we're stealing a couple minutes for that, like, it was too much stealing, you know, and we want to, let's focus on this this way and focus on the organizational things in the class period.
And are they doing, I guess my question is, are they doing that? Because...
Yes.
Because, I like to say this, but we should have been doing that prior to the pilot. And we chose the pilot because it wasn't happening. And now we're going back to the way it was previously. I mean, this is all great, but this, I see this as a much higher level and a much broader series of topics that you're talking about. So, and my fear is, is that we spent this time, we worked with the students to develop a skill that is going to be with them for the rest of their lives. And now we're kind of stepping away from that and assuming that the way we had done this previously is going to work now. And I have a question about that. And my question then is, are we doing any data search for this as to our stu, you know, we know which students are, not which, we know that students are or not binary, doing their homework or doing what they said. Are we seeing a decrease in from what we had when we were running the program? Or are we just assuming that that's going to stay at the level that it was before? I'd like to understand this a little bit better, that we're actually not taking a step back. That's my fear, is that we're going to take a step back on what we accomplished during that. We wouldn't have gone to the second year if you had not seen a positive step forward after the first year.
It's a great question. I would say that my best answer is going to be that during that time leading up to the implementation of OT at South, we did a lot of research and reading about students and their developmental levels and the appropriateness of certain things at the eighth grade level, sixth grade level, like, are kids able to be as independent as we think they should? You know, we had eighth graders who are as tall as me, not taller, but as taller as me, who look like full-grown adults. And so prior to doing the research, I think a lot of times, teachers would look and say, they're more than capable of taking care of these things by themselves. I'm a full adult, they're a full adult, we're all capable of managing all this on our own. I'm organized, so shall they be. Now, I spent a little time researching, and you know, the whole frontal cortex, all that, good fun, great page turners. And you realize, like, no, gang, that's not the eighth graders, you know, yeah, they are tall, they are big, but they are not developed. And so in spending those couple of years, working with the kids and doing the legwork going up to that, I think we've learned that we got to change some of our practices in the standard classroom. And so I feel comfortable that we understand the why behind doing these things in the standard classroom. And while we were going along doing that, North was doing some of that same research. And so we kind of arrived at the point where we feel like, no, this is it, our teachers get it. That, you know, the developmental readiness of our kids is still, they're eighth graders, but they're still kids. And they're not able to do as much as we think they can when it comes to these functional skills. So I'm not sure if that's, you know, the answer exactly to what you've asked, but it's in the ballpark, I hope.
Yes, and I would, and I appreciate your response. I would just ask that, when you do the evaluation of this program, you have to also include the criteria of why you did the pilot plant, not plant, sorry, pilot project that you had previously, and where have you moved on that? That has to be part of the criteria of whether or not this program is a success or not, because you may gain something here, but you may lose something over here.
Comment, that's all. Thank you for bringing it up about the eighth graders and their physiological appearance. But yeah, the brain research shows, and it's almost settled science, that the brain doesn't fully develop for most of us until we're into our early twenties. So even the high school seniors, their brains aren't really developed, so that's a very good point. And it's not so much dealing with the frontal lobe. Brain is complex in the sense that we just don't understand exactly how those interconnections, you know, it's not just the area or lobe, it's the interconnectedness. And of course, there are things like the limbic lobe in terms of memories and triggers and things like that. So I think that's a very good point you make, that we have to realize they're not quite mature as we think, yeah.
Thanks. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for updating on this. Next is the dual credit study update. Mr. Drexler will provide progress and next steps regarding our expansion of dual Mr. Drexler will provide progress and next steps regarding our expansion of dual credit opportunities for GHS students.
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Drexler for being here. I know he's worked with, you know, obviously Mr. Rogers and the BLT, the whole team at Geneva High School to really help move us forward. And also Mrs. Sims, who I think would be doing this introduction if she was able to be here with us tonight. But you know, this is a big component in our strategic plan, right? Expanding dual credit opportunities for our kids at Geneva High School. And I'm really appreciative of the work that Doug and the whole team at the high school have done to help us be able to start taking some actual concrete steps forward. So there's kind of a, there's not kind of, there is a comprehensive plan that they've put together that's in your, in the packet for today. And then Doug's also going to walk us through the phase one of this process, which really is going to get us to, you know, year one. Last year, maybe if you go to that first slide, Doug, I know, you know, last year we were talking about this, just in terms of identifying what's already offered, identifying staff who are eligible and have the capacity to teach some of these courses. And then we're getting into, let's be explicit about what are some high leverage courses that many kids would be able to access in terms of math and English Language Arts that we could, you know, potentially get in the course catalog that we could put in front of you. And then identify some ways for our, to get staff with the appropriate licensure. As I think you recall, we've talked about before, staff licensure is a key component to this. Because if staff don't have kind of the right credentialing, they're not able to teach some of those dual credit courses. So I think we've made a lot of progress and again, I want to thank the team, Doug and the team at the high school, and I'll pass it off to Doug.
All right. Excuse me, thank you. So going to spend a few minutes talking about dual credit this evening. There's different versions of dual credit, but I think for the purposes of this study, we're talking about the version that's on the screen here. So these are college courses that are taught at the high school by high school faculty. And they simultaneously earn college credit and high school credit. So they're working towards a Geneva High School diploma, also applying that credit towards a bachelor's degree in college. So these courses exist as part of a partnership agreement with a university. Commonly, this is the community college that serves that local high school region. But more and more, there are a lot of other colleges that have joined into this process. So there are universities all around the state that we have the potential to work with and some even out of state. So as Dr. Baird alluded to, these are taught by high school faculty members that have the specific credentials to teach that course. We're going to talk a little bit later in this presentation about those credentials. And students are essentially needing to meet the same requirements that on campus students do. So if there's a course prerequisite, if there's a minimum ACT score or a grade point average, they have to meet those same requirements as on campus students. So ultimately, students end up with a dual credit course on their GHS transcript. They also end up with this credit on the college transcript that eventually they send to the university that they're planning to attend. So we started about 20 years with one dual credit course called Personal Wellness. Mrs. Meister teaches that course. And that's a dual credit course with Wabonzi, and it's been a sustained course for all of those years. We currently have 15 dual credit courses and they're listed out here, spanning a variety of different disciplines, a variety of different topics and departments. And students are benefiting from all of these. So we are looking obviously to continue to expand this, but things have expanded greatly since that one class about 20 years ago. Several benefits of dual credit coursework. What you most often see when you look at a university's website that talks about dual credit, they talk about speed of degree completion and cost of degree completion both being reduced. And those are both true statements, but I think that misses a huge benefit, potentially an even bigger benefit, to this dual credit initiative. And that is, it makes students much more flexible within their bachelor's program to obtain a second major, multiple minors, to participate in study abroad programs that they otherwise might not have been able to do. So it's really about making the most, getting the most value out of the four-year experience in college, not just speeding it up. Because as you think about the job environment that our students are graduating into, the more flexible you are, the more adaptable you are, the wider background you have, you're going to be much more marketable to employers. Dual credit has changed a lot since its initial inception. Initially, not surprisingly, there was some hesitancy on the part of four-year universities to accept it, right? This is a novel idea, we're not sure what to make of this. It's now widely accepted at most universities. We are starting to see some limitations being put on place, in place, in terms of the quantity that students can bring in with them. Also, there's some specificity with certain majors where a college will want to see specific courses for that major taken on campus with them. So it's not, there are no universals when it comes to dual credit, but absolutely, it is more widely accepted today than it's ever been. But ironically, even the colleges that don't accept dual credit or put strict limits on it, they also value those courses on the high school transcript. And students often can still benefit from that in the college admissions process, even though the credit itself may not transfer. So it's kind of a paradox, but it's still benefiting students. So one of the first things we did about a year ago, as a building leadership team, is we started to talk about, okay, as we're looking at expanding dual credit at Geneva High School, what role or roles do we want this to play? What are we trying to achieve? So here are some highlights about the, from the guiding principles that we developed. One was that these would meet general education requirements at a college or university. So we spent a lot of time looking at those requirements at small, medium, large, public, private universities to get an updated sense of what those requirements are. We wanted these dual credit courses, or at least many of them, to be accessible to a wide range of students, like your average Geneva High School student who may not be in an AP course, may not be in an honors course, still wanted to provide them with access to dual credit coursework. Also wanted to be mindful that we have a very strong honors and AP program. And we don't necessarily want to do away with that and replace it with dual credit. So we wanted to maintain a full four-year sequence of honors or AP in each of the core departments. So in English, math, social studies and science, what you're going to see is we're maintaining four years of honors or AP in those areas. One thing we had a lot of discussion about is being mindful of how students learn and develop between their freshman year of high school and their senior year of college. They're really, really different, right? Some of those differences that Mr. Blue and Mr. Carley talked about, equal if not greater changes between a freshman in high school and a senior in college. Some of the skills that get developed in students, students need to experience those in high school and in college. So it may not always be the right decision to meet some of those requirements in high school and excluding them from the college experience. It's not either or, it's both, because we want students to be effective in the long run. And then another factor we really looked at is the long-term sustainability of dual credit courses. We looked at a variety of school districts that, when you look at their course catalog, they have a huge number of dual credit courses. But when you talk to them, they'll say, oh, we haven't run most of those in several years. That person left. So we need to be mindful of what we're creating, needing to have ways to sustain it, so we don't run into that same problem. So we spent some time referencing the faculty requirements. This slide deals specifically with that. There's a couple of different ways for faculty to be credentialed. One is that they hold a master's degree in the specific content to be taught. So the example that I'll use is history. If we wanted to run a dual credit history class, they would need to have a master's degree in history. Or if they had a different master's degree, let's say they had a master's degree in curriculum and instruction, and they add on to that with 18 graduate hours in history, that would also qualify them. So it could be a degree, it could be also graduate hours in that field on top of a master's in any field. And then the way the process works is those credentials are submitted to the college for review. The university reviews that and then essentially designates them as an adjunct instructor at that university. So that's the process for getting credentialed. There's no real specific license that you need, so licensure is not really applicable here. It's really the university determining that they are qualified to teach at that university. So we have had some initial discussions here about how do we get more people in Geneva credentialed to teach dual credit? Because this is honestly the most limiting factor to expansion of these opportunities. So we looked at trying to find strong contenders for dual credit courses that met all those kind of general guidelines that we came up with. Talked to a number of different universities, looked at the general education requirements at a variety of universities. We really looked at specific courses from the bottom up, meaning we looked at our existing courses and what could we tweak or change in order to align them with college courses, but also looked kind of from the top down, looking at college course catalogs and looking at areas that would probably be sustainable for our students if we added a new course at Geneva High School. So I'm going to spend a few minutes now going through the four core departments and in general, what the findings have been. So this is a snapshot of the English department, both as it stands today. The top two lines are our existing dual credit courses. And the rest of them are courses that we have identified as being strong contenders for dual credit. You'll notice that most of them are existing courses. We don't believe we need to go out and add eight new courses to the course catalog for Geneva High School. There's a couple that are new, but most of them are just tweaking a few things to align to the college course outlines, and we feel that those would be approved as dual credit courses. You will notice in the far right column, there's a lot of TBDs for implementation date. And that is because of the faculty credentialing. So we have a wonderful English department, they have all kinds of different degrees that are beneficial to their work as a teacher, but none of them are in literature or composition or communications. So that is a limiting factor here in terms of the timeline, but we really wanted to focus on the courses and then figure out, okay, how do we enact these courses that we've identified? But when fully enacted, if, you know, if and when we're able to do all of this, about 89% of our students would have access to at least six college credit hours before they graduate from Geneva High School. That's a very high percentage, and they could earn a maximum if they really avail themselves of 18 college credit hours in English. The math department is next, and I'm going to have John Thomas, Department Chair for Mathematics, kind of talking through that department. John also happens to be a dual credit instructor at Geneva High School, so he can kind of share a day in the life or a semester in the life of a dual credit instructor.
Hello, I'm John Thomas. For those of you I haven't met. So math is very fortunate in two regards. One, we have tons of students at Geneva that are already taking college level courses. The courses they're taking are equivalent to credit bearing courses at colleges all over the country. So we had the courses available. We also, over the last 15 years, Aurora University had a Masters of Science in Mathematics. And we have had a bunch of our staff members take that hard masters and go through it. So we currently have five staff members that have a Masters of Science in Mathematics. We have another one that's going to be finishing up here shortly. And then we have two that are signing up for a program this fall. And we have two teachers that also have an MA in mathematics, which gives them availability to teach courses up through pre-calculus. So we have the staffing in the math department to be able to have a little bit more aggressive implementation pathway. So this year, Calc I and II has started. I took that on honestly, kind of as the guinea pig for the department, just to help the department work out any of the kinks that might be in the process, so I understand it, so I can help them transition as we bring on more courses over the next three years. So as we go through, we'll continue to add courses and give more availability to our students. As we get fully implemented, we'd be at the place where we'd look at about 85% of the students being able to earn up to six credit hours. To give you a little bit about the Calc I and II course that we're offering this year, of the 45 students that enrolled, 40 of them signed up for dual credit. The five that did not, it was mostly due to placement criteria from Wabonzi. Some of that were younger kids that hadn't taken an ACT or SAT and didn't go in and take a placement test this summer. A couple were students that just missed and they might have taken it again, but too late to qualify for dual credit. The beauty of the way we're doing it, they can still take it as an AP course, so that college credit's still available for them as well. It's been a great transition. Wabonzi has been a fantastic partner to work with in mathematics. They respect our presence as a teacher in the classroom, give us guidance in terms of curriculum, and really has made the process pretty smooth and seamless for us. So we're looking forward to continue our offerings in mathematics. I'm going to pass back to Mr. Drexler.
One thing that I'll point out with both math and I'll go back to English, you see the first course here, Quantitative Literacy and Statistics. This is not a course that's included in the 85% of students will have access to six college credits before they graduate. This is a course, it's a little bit different type of dual credit. It's different in that students taking that class don't earn a college transcript, they don't earn a college grade. However, the students in that class meet the prerequisite for their freshman year math course. So it does have the effect of speeding things up and giving them more flexibility in college, even though it's not giving them a college credit. And if you look back at English, one of the courses we're looking at is English, a transitional English course that does the same thing. So essentially, the students that take a little bit longer to get to that level of proficiency, students in that class would be able to take English 101 then as a freshman. So it is essentially like an English 095 course that's required to get a prerequisite to take freshman, the freshman course. So it is dual credit, but it's a little bit different. Spin on it, still, we think very beneficial to students. In science, we have, we've had a couple of dual credit courses for many years, Natural Disasters Course, Astronomy and Horticulture. Science is a little bit different because science probably has, does have the most kind of individual college major restrictions on the types of courses the college wants students to take on campus. So we really did a little bit different type of study with the science department. So for example, when we talk to our AP Bio students, not surprisingly, most of them and most of the anatomy students are planning on a career in healthcare and medicine. Colleges typically want students to take those classes on campus as a freshman, so we don't want to interfere with that. They'll be really well-prepared to be awesome in those classes as freshmen. Same thing with calculus-based physics. Most of those students are planning to go into engineering. The engineering schools want students to take that on campus. But when we looked at AP Chemistry, most of the students in AP Chemistry, they're kind of the biomedical healthcare profession students that are planning to pursue those types of majors. And for them, chemistry would be a great non-direct major requirement for their major. So we feel like that is a high-value dual credit course. Similarly, AP Environmental Science is a great fantastic course, but most of the students in that course are not planning to pursue environmental science as a profession or a college major. AP Physics 1, we have a lot of students that are taking the algebra-based physics that are not taking calculus-based physics after that. They're taking it for a college admission requirement, but they're not planning to go into engineering. So having a semester's credit of general physics really could meet a student's science requirement. All of these can meet a student's science requirement at a college or university. So when we add those courses to what we're already offering, about 95% of our students would have access to at least eight college credit hours, because most of these lab science courses are four hours each instead of typically three in the other departments. And then last, but certainly not least, is social studies. We've identified some courses here as well that we think would be strong contenders. Our existing AP Psychology class, which we've been running now for five or six years, with a few changes to that course, similar to AP Calculus that we're running this year, it can be dual credit and AP at the same time. In addition to AP Psychology, we're looking to bring back a course that we kind of mothballed a few years ago, Psychology II. We stopped offering that when we rolled out Advan- We stopped offering that when we rolled out Advanced Placement Psychology, but students are really interested in psychology. This is a very interesting field to them. So we're also able to offer dual credit for students who complete both Psych 1 and Psych 2. They would be able to earn dual credit for psychology as well. So with psychology, we would have an AP kind of weighted grade pathway to dual credit and a non-weighted grade pathway towards psychology dual credit. And then addition, we've identified some other courses, an Ancient World History course and a Viking History course, which is kind of interesting, as potential new electives, and then our existing Urban History course would be a contender as well. So about ninety, similar to science, about ninety-five percent of our students would have access to at least six college credit hours in Social Studies. So we looked beyond just the specific courses. There are some implications to maintaining a dual credit program. So we do, we have, as I said earlier, started some conversations about how do we get, build an infrastructure of human resources that support more dual credit offerings to students and sustaining that over time. There are some academic calendar implications for many of these courses. Some of the universities have a common final exam that we would be required to administer. So if we have a first semester course, basically, an earlier start to the year is better for first semester dual credit courses of that nature. There are some potential changes to how some of the external ranking organizations might view the school district as well, especially if more students start taking dual credit courses and the students in AP courses maybe don't take the optional exam. Some of those ranking and rating organizations use the number of AP tests taken in their systems of rating. So even though we would be making decisions to help students and the external rating organizations, their mathematics might spit out some statistics that change for our district. So we plan to continue with Phase 2 of this dual credit study over the course of the next year, focusing on the remaining departments of Fine and Applied Arts, Wellness, and World Language. So we plan to be back here in a year with an update on those departments. And with that, I would be happy to entertain any questions, as I'm sure Mr. Thomas would as well.
Anyone?
Yes, I have several questions, but thank you, because the information was so thorough, and then I was looking through and it made me engage even further in the topic. So first, I know we can take AP courses as either dual credit or non-dual credit, so students will have that choice, but I assume that the content of the class wouldn't change because that's an AP course. So that's pretty, it's going to be pretty consistent whether it's dual credit or not. My concern is some of those other classes that we have, such as speech, critical film, horticulture, like those non-AP classes, if those are, are those only going to be offered as dual credit then? And if you choose not to, you'll still be sitting in the same class as the dual credit class, correct?
So yeah, that's a great question. So initially, when the Dual Credit Act was passed, I don't know, fifteen-ish years ago, one of the mandates was you had to have dedicated, every student in that section of the class had to be a dual credit student. The colleges figured out pretty quickly that that's not how high schools schedule and how high schools work. So you can now have mixed classes, with some students earning dual credit and others not. One of the reasons we identified those classes, and I'll use speech as an example, when we looked at our existing speech curriculum and we looked at the course outline that is provided by the college, they're already extremely close. So we're really not changing the experience significantly. It's really some tweaks to adhere to a couple of extra topics that we need to incorporate into the curriculum. It's not necessarily changing the difficulty of the course at all, it's just making sure we're covering what the community colleges expect of that course.
Okay, that's good to know, because I worry that we're cutting out options for students who don't feel like dual credit or AP would be right for them, and leaving them without an English credit that they have to receive, or a science class that they might find something really that they enjoy in. So as long as we're not adjusting curriculum to make it more difficult and leaving out students who find space in those classes.
Yeah, and that was one of our kind of guiding principles. We wanted a lot of these courses to be accessible to a wide range of students, not just at the honors or AP level for that very reason.
So then, I think one of our pieces of thought around this needs to be how we're communicating this as we go to parents and students when they're choosing courses, because I'm sure the dual credit alone could be scary, or also that there are implications for students if they choose dual credit and they need to get a certain grade, and how this will appear on their transcripts. That was all very interesting information. So just because it could have, if they don't perform well, it could have an implication further for their college admission than just a regular high school class may have.
Yeah, I think, you know, if we were magically able next year to run everything that you've seen on the screen tonight, which would be awesome, there is a huge education component to students and parents on that topic. And as you referenced, we also don't want students to kind of solely chase dual credit and avoid taking a class that they are really, really interested in just because it doesn't offer the dual credit. High school is still a great opportunity to try out different electives that you may not be able to do in the future. So we don't want that to become the sole criteria that students and parents are using to select classes.
Perfect. And then the last question I had was a little more financial. Have we looked at how much it's going to impact our budget to have more graduate-qualified teachers? Because they're paid on a different scale than our regular, our bachelor's degree teachers are, so this will have a financial impact, and we don't know yet what those numbers are, I don't think.
Yeah, I think that's correct. I mean, that's correct. Now, understand that, you know, as Mr. Drexler was mentioning, the vast majority of our teachers do already have a master's degree, so, you know, their compensation is based on already having that. So the financial implications here may be about some of the conversations we're going to have to have about how we are either hiring folks who already have those credentials or figuring out how to support folks within our current district to get those credentials. And so that's that next big financial component that we'll have to be talking about more than, I think, you know, saying more teachers will have masters. I mean, Dr. Law can probably say, I don't know that, we're too far away from more teachers having masters. The vast majority already do. So it'll be about how we get there, is the bigger financial question. Does that sound right, Doug?
Yeah, the thing I would add to that is, a lot of this is really about access to the graduate programs. So you heard Mr. Thomas say, one of the main reasons why we have so many math teachers with a graduate degree in math is that it was at a university that's five miles away, right? Most of the content-based master's degrees are, they're typically not marketed or packaged for working teachers, right? You'd have to take a sabbatical or a leave of absence in order to engage in that coursework. That's not going to happen in most cases. The good news is that there are, similar to mathematics, there are some universities that are starting now to cater, not necessarily to an entire graduate degree, but eighteen hours of the dual credit coursework, making that more accessible to teachers statewide, knowing this is not just a Geneva challenge, right? This is a statewide challenge and a nationwide challenge to find qualified people to engage in these dual credit courses.
Okay, yeah, I think that that's helpful to know, and then that, I assume, is part of our whole human resource process. It's like figuring out, do we need to be sourcing some of those programs and then maybe reimbursing in some way, or like some sort of system like that? I know that like in the private sector, there's a lot of that that happens, so I don't know that we necessarily have that for us, but if we're pushing or trying to get more of these teachers certified in these areas. So, well, thank you so much. It's all very helpful information, and I know that took a long time to like do all these studies and figure it all out, and it was very helpful to read that all. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just had a quick question. I was trying to take some notes as you were talking. Thank you for all the really great information. You had slipped in a line about maybe an earlier start date might have implications for dual credits. Would you mind just very briefly sharing what you meant by that?
Sure. So the start and end date of a college course, and John and Lisa can both talk about this as well, because they're teaching dual credit courses, really specifically the end date of the course is the university end date of the course. And typically, that is ending a week before our winter break begins. So there's a week that's kind of shaved off from covering content in those first semester dual credit courses, especially if they're a semester-long class. So to really get students to get all through the topics that the college expects us to get through in order to really be compliant with that, we'd like to not cover those topics and just kind of check a box and say, yeah, we talked about that briefly. We really want to approach this with integrity and make sure we're covering what we say we're covering.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much. Dual credit is very important to this board and I think to this district. And for those of you on this scheduling committee, if you're wondering whether an early start date is a good thing or a bad thing, you've got a reason. And with that note, item five, unless you have anything to add, gentlemen?
Just thank you guys very much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Item five, Proposed 2025 Draft Tax Year Levy, Policy 410. Todd Lathan will present the 2025 Draft Tax Year Levy to the full board. The district is required to file the levy by the last Tuesday in December. The board is required to approve resolution to adopt the 2025 tax levy, which will be
All right, good evening. So this is the 2025 Tax Year Levy. It's received in fiscal, calendar year 2026 over two fiscal years, and this is our draft levy presentation. So a little bit about the levy components. It consists of an equal assess valuation. That was essentially the value of the property determined by the county. Our PTEL is our Property Tax Extension Limitation Law. It's a law that sets the maximum that we can levy each given year. Our CPI is the Consumer Price Index of this particular levy year. It's set as of December 2024. We'll cover the max rates and tax extensions, the total extensions allowed by the district, the revenue recapture process, which is essentially after items such as the board review, considers some reductions, that it goes back and recaptures that revenue so the district's not lost those funds, and lastly, a truth and taxation hearing, which is for transparency. So what is the EAV? Essentially, it's the property valuation after the county and the state apply equalization calculations, and those are performed at those two levels. It's important because the EAV is captured to ensure that the district sees financial growth. It also is the total EAV is what we use to multiply the approved tax rate, which is per $100, to arrive at the extension. This is just the ten-year history of the rate-setting EAV, just to give an idea of how that has grown over time. In 2025, it's estimated that the EAV that the district will be using for the levy process is $2,138,892,182, and that is a 9.61% change over the prior year. In the Finance Committee, we had a discussion about how that has occurred, and some of that is just simply the value of homes. Just a couple of years ago, I remember using about a $375,000 home as the average home sale in Geneva, and most recently, looking at some of the results, it's now five and a quarter. So that explains some of the process about how people's value of homes have gone up because essentially, they're more desirable. A little bit about our new property. This is a process that isn't part of the tax cap, tax gap, so it's not part of it. So this year, we experienced some growth in the district, in the commercial area, in the industrial area, and the residential. So overall, it's $12,204,693 of estimated new growth. And I pointed out at the bottom that last year, the new construction was just $15.6 million, so we've seen a reduction in growth for this particular levy cycle. This is the Property Tax Extension Law. It's also called the Tax Cap, and essentially, it just puts a tax relief on property owners that we can't exceed a certain amount every year. And next slide, we'll explain a little bit more about that. So essentially, it's set at 5% increase for the Consumer Price Index, whichever's lower. So that's what we have to follow when we place the levy each year. And so this year, we'll be looking at the CPI as a lower amount. This is the Consumer Price Index, so for this year, again, we'll be looking at December of 2024. You can see we reached a high point in 2021, and for 2024, the CPI is 2.9%. That's confirmed by the county, and the county identifies that that's the number that I have to use in the levy process. So funds subject to PTEL, all the funds except the bottom bond and interest, our working cash, and our revenue recapture. So those are the funds that are not affected by the tax cap. Here's our limiting rate. So this is the calculation that I do every year. I use a spreadsheet for this, but I can also do it by hand. So the limiting rate equals the prior year extension times one plus the lesser of 5% of CPI divided by the total EAV minus the new property or construction. Just a couple of notes at the bottom, that the limiting rate is based on the prior year extension. New properties outside the tax gap, as is debt service. This is our limiting rate history, so our tax year, as you can see, over time, our total rate has been reduced, and I mentioned to the Finance Committee that as EAV goes up, the rate goes down. And so that's just a factor of the process. I'll give the example that if, let's say, 100 people paid in taxes and we needed $100, everyone's paying a dollar. If we have more people paying the system, I would require less dollars from them. So that's kind of gives the example of how those that contribute grow, there's less of a rate that goes out. In years where we have less EAV, we would need more money and you'd see a higher rate that would come. But for our particular ten-year history, that rate has gone down over time. It was pointed out by the Finance Committee, one of the questions was, is why is the non-cap going down? And the response to that was, essentially, it is our debt service. So as we pay that down, our non-cap amount goes down as well. So this is our historical levy request. So it's basically what we ask when we do the levy for each of the levy years versus what we actually receive. So we're quite close to what we ask and what we receive in the levy process. So for 2024, we requested 105 million roughly, and we received 104.9. So it's very close to what we asked for. So these are some of the assumptions that are built into the draft levy, and we still have a levy process. We'll come back in November and then finalize in December. 2.9% is the CPI that's set for us to follow, or capped at 5% or the lesser thereof. The rest of the EAV has gone up, we're now $2,139,835,080. That is a 9.61% increase in EAV over the prior year. Our new construction, again, is just about 12.2 million. That is a rough number. It'll be confirmed later when all the construction's been turned in, all the assessment's done. The cap levy at this particular point in time is 3.9 million, and so with that, we estimate $108,142,811 in our estimated tax receipts, and that represents an increase of $3,233,514 over the prior year. This is what the EAV calculation looks like, so all the figures that I have are taken from the spreadsheet that does the calculation for us. I will point out in the bottom right here, with our cap levy amount, it's 3.9%, and then it says, "Truth and taxation require the answers no," but we do it every year because we believe it's good for transparency and the fact that we have a hearing in which the public can come and give testimony. So what does a truth and taxation hearing look like? So we have to put a notice in the paper. It allows our member of the public to come and give the testimony, as I mentioned. It allows the board to give an opportunity to hear that testimony, but then also provide their own input. And then lastly, I'm required under my most recent law to provide the cash reserve balance of all funds that I have to state during the levy process. So what are some changes that might come that would affect the levy from what we discussed tonight to how it might change going forward? Well, one of those is that we're out process, the process right now is we're out getting bids for our capital projects, and so we won't know what those are until we come back. There's also going to be change orders from current projects, there's also going to be a change in funding. Our working agreements and benefits weigh heavily upon some of our considerations as we draft the budget and then we write a levy to it. We also look at the economy, inflation and global factors. There are also going to be changes at the local, state, and federal level. So example, that is this year, we had a reduction in some of our categorical funding. It went from just about 80% to 75% funding, so we see that impact in the current year. There's an example of how the state could change something on us from the time we levy into the into the timely budget. And then lastly, capital plans, technology plans are an important factor. Just last week, we had our first rough numbers in our technology plan weren't fully factored into levy because I didn't know what they are. So there's another example of how the levy can change from one presentation to the next. This is Public Act 102895, which is the disclosure of cash reserve balances. So this is an unaudited funder, fund number as of June 30th, 2025, taking all the funds, Fund 10 of Education, all the way through Fund 90, which is our fire prevention and safety. At the end of June, we had $63,144,734 of cash reserve. I will note that this is always after we have a May and June tax filing, which is always where our reserve looks a little healthier than it really is. And lastly, what does the final plan look like for us as a district? Well, after we have the public hearing, we publish the article, we take that testimony, we'll have a final presentation before the board in December. I'll ask that you adopt the levy, approve it. With that comes a certificate of tax levy that you have to approve, which explains the amount per fund, which then adds up to the total number. And then on behalf of the board and the district, I'll file those documents with King County. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Item four on the agenda is public comments. And we do have a request for comment from Alicia Han.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alicia Han and I use she/her pronouns. I am the Family and Community Engagement Specialist for Birth to Five Illinois. In case you're not familiar with Birth to Five Illinois, we're a Department of Incra nonprofit organization working locally to build a stronger, more inclusive and equitable early childhood system. Birth to Five Illinois puts the family stories at the center of policy and program decisions. We were created to better understand how to help families with young children thrive in their communities. And we listen to families and document their challenges and successes around accessing childcare and early education opportunities. Some of those caregivers and residents are residents of the school, of the school district. So we listen, my job is to listen, to ask questions and share back to both sides. Locally, we see programs and services that don't have nearly enough preschool, childcare and early intervention openings for children. We see a system that simply doesn't work for families despite all the programs and resources that are available. We share those wants and needs to the leadership who can bring out about change. And some of those include our regional office of education and the nine school districts that comprise it, as well as the local and state elected officials. Over the past two years, Birth to Five Illinois' regional team has published an early childhood regional needs assessment, a mental behavioral health report and an action plan that not only outlines some of the challenges within our local early childhood system, but more importantly, makes recommendations and outlines action steps for how we can better support children throughout Geneva and King County. Our Birth to Five Illinois team is currently working with providers, local community leaders, libraries and families to address the recommendations that have talked to, that have talked to us about. Their continued feedback and input will serve as a roadmap for our work. We also work alongside our funders, the Illinois State Board of Education, and look forward to the new Department of Early Childhood that will encompass several existing programs under this new state department starting next year. As we continue to, as we continue to engage with local leadership, we also seek to engage with local district administration. We know that school districts play a critical role in aiding parents and caregivers. And we want to make sure that the school district administration understands the importance of reaching children in the community as early as birth. That way, families can make informed decisions and access early learning and care opportunities for their children. School districts need to reach out not only to the children within their school walls, but also the parents and caregivers in supporting them throughout the critical years of birth to age five. I would invite you to look at our reports that can be found on our website at www.birthtofiveil.com and look at the information we have been gathering over the past few years, the past three years. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your letting, making us aware of this program. Any other public comments?
Well, we'll go on to the next item, legislative updates. Jackie.
Yes, I'm going to attempt once again to go to our general assembly website and show you how you can do the legislator lookup and also the new way of looking up different bills and public acts. If you can. Yes, I've already went to the website and it was just working five minutes ago, so fingers crossed.
Well, she's doing that. I'm just going to thank everybody for hanging in there. It's a barn burner tonight already, isn't it? It's a good one.
All right, you made it. Okay, so first off, the Illinois General Assembly website is ilga.gov. And look, it's working. How lovely. So I had described this last time with our new website, to find the legislator lookup, it's a lot easier. You just scroll down and here's a button, find my legislator. So we'll click on that. As I had mentioned last time, this is GIS-based. Here is our communities in Illinois. I'm going to just start zooming in to get us closer, but you can do a search to find address, whatever. I'm actually just going to put in some of our school names. Fabian Elementary School. So let's say you live near Fabian. The map brings up our school. And then here on the right, you can see who your state elected officials are. So the senator for this area is there in the house. Like last time, we do have our federal folks here that you can take a look at and see, or and state, I guess, too. But at the bottom of this list is the House of Representatives person for this area because it is different in different areas of our community. So there is Fabian. Now let's say you live near Harrison. And you will see there are different people who are members. And if you want to contact any of them, just click on their name, takes you to their page. Here's their Springfield office contact, their local district office contact, they have a biography, and then any of the bills that they are associated with, whether they have submitted them or they're part of the bills that have been out there or public acts. And then you can just click on them to read them a little bit more. So I'm going to zoom out a little bit because, as you can see in our area, there's different colors here depending where you live. So we do have different representatives for different, different areas. And we do have this neighborhood up here. So I'm just going to click and show you again, some different folks who represent them. So if you want to just put in your address on the search feature, it's pretty easy to find out where, who your local legislator is now. One of the other things I mentioned last week was, or last time, was that it's easier to do lookups. Before, you had to try and remember what bill number I gave you or public act number. You really couldn't search by topic, but now it's a little bit easier to do that. If you come here, and let's say Jackie was talking about some public act, you don't remember the number. Now you can come up here and actually come over here and do your search. It's already got public act selected. So let's look at school, bus seat, belts. All right, there's public act 0075, which I think is the right one. Yep, that's it. All right, so the first one that came up. So we actually had a few questions last week about what this has. And it's not very long. But here is the actual public act of that seatbelt requirement for school buses and how it's presented in here. It does define what a new school bus is. A newly purchased school bus shall be equipped with this. It does talk about whether or not the school district has to ensure that anyone is using the safety belt or the restraint system is properly, correctly adjusted. In fact, I can't read with my glasses on, sorry. And fasten to give instruction on how to correctly adjust or fasten the seatbelt. So I think that was the question we had last time was whether or not we have to ensure that the students are using these devices on the school buses. And then if it does not apply, if it's a bus that's leased by a school district or a school bus that's legally registered, blah, blah, blah. So that is some of the answers to our questions that I couldn't look up last time because I couldn't get to this page. But the new school buses, it's a newly purchased school bus beginning July 1st, 2031. So that's how this, their newer website works now. And I just wanted to quickly show you how that happens. If anyone has any questions, I can try and answer them, but that's really my update. They are, the general assembly is back in session starting tomorrow for veto session. I anticipate again, it'll be pretty busy this week trying to push some last things through until next year's general assembly meets again. All right, thank you.
All right, Jackie, thank you very much. Working my way superintendent's report.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. I'll start real quick with, and some of this is just summaries or recaps of some other things that we've addressed previously and just want to make sure. Let's drag in here. There we go. There we go. All right, so first I would, you know, we're trying to do our facts and thank yous. And so timely, I think, with the presentation from Mrs. Meister and her awesome students, the red ribbon week, I want to talk about briefly, just kind of highlight all the kind of extracurricular opportunities that happen for kids. You know, the first two things we heard our students talk about were kind of finding a passion and a natural high, having mentors. And there are a lot of people who do a lot of things outside of the school day to support kids and keep kids active and engaged and giving them opportunities to find those things that can be passions and their natural, natural highs. There's over 150 total activities that kids can have. And you know, obviously, we think of stuff like the athletics with, you know, sports, all the sports and things like that, you know, the arts and the plays and the music. We think of all those kinds of things. But, you know, activities, student government and all that kind of stuff. But the clubs is really a place that a lot of kids are finding opportunities. You know, there's a new Dungeons and Dragons club at the middle school, right? Like we're finding, trying to, teachers are trying to find as many ways to get kids plugged in and engaged. And I just think that that's, that's really cool. And especially highlighting, you know, in terms of, you know, what Lisa and her kids were telling us kids really need. So it's pretty awesome. We have over 285 total staff who are supporting kids in that way. And that's, I think, pretty incredible. It's also, I hate to say it, but it's that time of year, boo. I know, we've got to start thinking about, just thinking ahead for planning for the potential for inclement weather. I share this with you guys every year, just as a reminder of, you know, kind of our cascade and decision-making progress, process, right? So obviously, our first priority is in-person learning. And, you know, when I'm out driving around or talking with our other superintendents and looking at forecasts, our first goal is going to be if we think we can have in-person learning and do it safely, we're going to do it because we think that's the best place for kids to learn. If we have a scenario that fits in like this perfect little bubble of, you know, bad weather that we think is expected to improve, you know, this is, this is the kind of thing you would do if there's kind of storming, but we know it's going to end by like 5:45. And so it can be plowed by this time so we can get those buses going and do a late start, we'll do that. Because again, we still think that in-person is key, but you got to have the perfect scenario for that. If there's bad weather and, you know, it's expected and we think we're going to have time to prepare, obviously, you as the board have approved our e-learning plan and ROE has that on file and we'll implement that if we need to. And then the only other one is if there's, you know, kind of unexpected or severe, unexpected weather comes up or severe and sustained storms, you know, something where we know it's going to just be snowing, you're going to get 10 feet of snow all day long. In that instance, we, you know, may do the good old fashioned emergency day because we know families are not going to be able to be engaged in e-learning and everybody's going to be digging out together and stuff like that. So that's a potential option, too. So this is kind of our cascade and we just think it's important to remind families about that. Just wanted to highlight kind of the three things we're talking about and thinking about. Last week, Mrs. Sims shared some draft calendars and we got some feedback from the board and, you know, from the community as well about those calendars. Our calendar committee then is going to meet again this week, actually, and we'll be able to bring more information to you. The three big things we're kind of looking at. One, you know, as Mr. Drexler kind of highlighted in his presentation earlier and Molly asked about, you know, one of those key features is that start of the year. Are we going to potentially start a little bit earlier or a little bit later? And obviously, candidly, there's two camps in that, right? There's folks who have strong feelings on both sides of that. So, but that's one of the things we're talking about. Again, looking at that homecoming parade and potentially coordinating some kind of half-day opportunity for that. And another thing Mrs. Sims highlighted a little bit last week, but just kind of want to put out there on your radar is the notion of a potential, and I think, Stephanie, you asked about this a little bit, a potential two-year calendar where we would throw, bring to you for approval, two years worth that might give a longer runway for parents to be able to know and plan and all that kind of stuff. So that's really where we're at and we should be able to, again, that committee is meeting again this week and we'll bring some information to you at a future meeting. Last, just a very high level here. The Illinois School Report Card will be released in a few days. And so I wanted to get in front of you and the community here a little bit, just to, again, touch base at a very high level. Remember what's new with this Illinois Report Card. All the, you know, the tests are the same as last year, but there are new cut scores and new proficiency ranges. So that means that, you know, our scores are going to come out and scores across the state are going to come out and look a little different. When we think about those new cut scores and proficiency ranges, we think it's important to highlight upfront kind of three things that are important for everybody to know. One is that there's significant variation in rigor across the grades and subject areas, ranging, you know, from as low as the 45th national percentile to the 69th. So what that means is in some grades, kids who perform at the 45th percentile, which means as well or better than 45% of the population. In some grades, kids who perform at the 45th percentile will be considered proficient. Whereas in other grades, they might need to score as high as the 69th percentile to be considered proficient. And there's some wide variability across the grade levels in those two areas, especially in math, actually. Not like this, not like this. So one of the things that means, and we're understanding this, we obviously haven't seen anyone else's data, but all reports are, most districts are going to see a kind of a steady drop in proficiency from grade three to eight in math that really is unrelated to kind of school or student or district performance, right? It's not like, you know, basically what we're going to see is the percentage of kids who are proficient in math will be lower each year from third grade to eighth grade. That is largely a function of this rigor variation. And so we're going to have to look at that in context. And I'll show you something about that in a minute. And then that also means most districts are going to see a higher proficiency level in ELA compared to math despite, and again, I'll show you this in a minute, but it's not, it's not like every district across the state is, kids in each district are learning way more in reading than in math, but yet when you look at the data, what you're going to see is in most districts across the state, the percentage of kids who are proficient in reading, it's going to be higher than the percentage of kids who are proficient in math. So we, I shared these last year, and again, this is preliminary data, it's not coming out officially till Friday, but I've shared the scatter out officially till Friday, but I've shared these scatter plots with you before because I feel like they're kind of a good barometer, a good way to look at our, you know, our data here. So what this is showing is all the unit districts in Illinois. So this is all the districts like ours that are, you know, pre-K through 12. And you see us, we're the little triangle. And so, you know, over here, we've got the percent proficient and across the bottom is the per pupil expenditure of the district, right? So you can see that triangle, you can see where Geneva falls, kind of near the top of, you know, that proficiency level. This is in English Language Arts, you see. So, you know, you're seeing about 75-ish, a little more percent, you know, proficient in English Language Arts, and then you see kind of where everybody else is kind of clustered in terms of both their per pupil expenditure and the percent proficient. Then when you look at that same thing for math, you see how the clusters look very similar, right? But everything kind of drops down, and again, that's largely a function of that rigor variation. But you can see, again, here we are in math and, you know, falling in about the same general vicinity as it's compared to the other unit districts in the state. And I do find these scatter plots to be helpful, this is, these are just screen grabs, obviously, but you can compare these in a wide variety of ways, not just by per pupil expenditure. And so, you know, I think that those are pretty helpful and something that maybe our families will want to look at when the school report card comes out because I think it does highlight that, you know, compared to a lot of districts across the state and how much, you know, we're spending per student, that I think we're doing a pretty good job. So when this comes out, I think the first thing to know is that this is a new baseline, right? New proficiency targets, new baseline from which to kind of measure and evaluate ourselves. We do continue to perform well above the state average in these content areas and at all grade levels. We really want to see all the data come out for all the schools so we can really start to do some further analysis and kind of evaluate, compare, and we really want to be able to do that from a percentile perspective, like where do we fall in terms of a percentile rank across the state? And we'll be able to bring some of that data to you once that's all released. And while we're doing great, obviously, there's room for growth. I know Mrs. Sims talked about this last week as well, and we recognize that, and as we take a look at this through this new lens, we're going to try to identify some of those ways. So that's really all I have.
Can I ask a question about that, Dr. Barrett?
Sure.
Is this only happening on the Illinois Report Card or will we also see that in like some of the results we get from testing, like when we do MAP testing and we get percentiles or when some of our third graders and up do COGAT testing?
Good question.
Will those percentiles be different?
No, so where you'll see the, where you will see the changes on the reports that families get for the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, the state mandated test, right? So those are the state accountability tests, so that's where you'll see these new proficiency targets and the new bands, right? The new meets and exceeds or proficient and above proficient, I think we're calling it now. But with MAP, with COGAT, with those things, those organizations may well, may well be doing some renorming as well, but that's not the same as this. They'll renorm when they look at their data and decide that, you know, it's time to renorm that, but that's not necessarily associated with this.
You know I have to say it.
Yeah, please.
If you go back to the
For sure.
The scatter plots, I think one of the things that you and your team need to do is to look at the, if you look at this, I mean, where we are on proficiency is excellent. Where we are on cost per student is, is we are on the higher side.
Mm-hmm.
And there are schools out there that are able to deliver as high a proficiency with less cost per student, and I think we need to understand, you know, it may be that they are very small districts with, with specific things and very small organizations or schools, and that's understandable, but I think an evaluation needs to be done here so that we understand where that is because as a taxpayer, you know, there are people out there that are going to show, look at this and say, are we overspending and do we need to cut back or to be more like some of these other schools?
I think that's fair, it's a good question. And we can share more of that information with you, thank you.
Of course, we could just move to Galesburg. The next item is Board Dialogue Topics Pending Action Consideration, the IASB Resolution and Constitutional Amendments. We got those last meeting, and I have carefully reviewed them, I trust you all have as well, so we get to report back.
Yes, so we had a few questions about the one resolution that was in our packet that I did show everybody how you can get to it. There was a question about, is this something that was only for smaller districts or districts with lower incomes? So I took a look at the resolution again. There was, one of the points in there was that they wanted to establish a dedicated school bus safety equipment grant within the State Board of Education Transportation Line to provide financial assistance, subject to appropriation, for the verified incremental cost of factory installed three-point seatbelt systems on new release buses after July 1st, 2031. So it does not say anything in there what size district that is, if they have more needs than other districts. It just says that they want to have a special dedicated grant that we could apply for, for financial assistance to make up that cost of the school buses that'll cost more because we have those systems in there. We also had a question about whether or not they had to use the safety belts. I read to you just earlier that they don't, we do not have to provide any training, we do not have to check that students are using the safety belt systems or anything like that. I don't have anything about crashes and injuries, I wasn't able to get that. Todd did take a look at what that would mean for our transportation team, and they would have to possibly go through a few things and change them. I don't know if you want to highlight a couple of things that might be different for you in the transportation side?
Yeah, I think part of that is just overall being familiar with the change of the seatbelts. We talked, probably the biggest factor is going to be the cost to put those into our buses, and then I think lastly, it's just the bid process. It does seem kind of bad that they mandate it, but then you don't train or ensure that it's being used. So I'm sure that's something that may be looked at before we get to that 2031, but we certainly will be prepared for it.
Thank you. One of the other things that were in this resolution about that small district waiver, so there is where different districts can have different things from this, they would have a deadline that was extended to 2034, so they would have more time, and they would be districts with under 2,000 students. It would also authorize qualifying districts to use transportation fund bond proceeds revolving lease agreements for the local cost share without counting against the district statutory debt limit, so that's for all districts. And then, again, directing IDOT to look at alternative research-based occupant protection technologies that may offer equal or greater safety at a lower cost, giving districts flexibility to comply. So those are the four different things that were in this resolution that they're proposing. This was put forth by the Resolutions Committee as a do adopt, and just wanted to check with everyone here if you had any other thoughts on this, if we are going to vote do adopt or do not adopt at the committee meeting next month or the delegation assembly next month.
Anyone?
All right, so I think do adopt will be the winner here since it's one that we'll be able to apply for potential extra funding. As a reminder, this is not making law, this is just having the IASB folks lobby to make some changes to this current public act.
The other thing, constitutional amendments, looking at these, they almost all seem to be dealing with making what is written work a little more like what is actually done. And in some cases, to smooth out some possibilities of people maybe not having been as vetted as we would want and things of that nature, but I agreed with all of their changes and I thought they were sound.
Yeah, does anyone have any comments on the constitutional amendments from last time? I did attend the Kishawaki Division Meeting last week, and they brought those up and did reiterate that they were just taking what's actually in practice and trying to put that down into the Constitution. At the delegate assembly, it will take a two-thirds majority to pass those changes to the Constitution, and again, they had recommended do adopt on all those. Unless anyone has any different thoughts, I'm going to go ahead and vote do adopt for all of those.
Thank you, Jackie, for getting answers on all of that.
Yes.
I really appreciate that.
Thank you indeed.
Do we need to take a formal vote? I didn't look at the agenda. That was a motion? Yeah, okay. So do I have a motion to approve voting do adopt for both the resolution and the constitutional amendments?
I'll move.
Second. Second.
Stephanie Belie.
Aye.
Jackie Forbes.
Aye.
Willard Hook.
Aye.
Paul Rizanski.
Aye.
Molly Insari.
Aye.
Larry Cabeen.
Aye.
Okay, let's hear of that one. Work-study topics and future action consideration, GHS proposed new and modified courses for Contained in the packet was information from Assistant Superintendent Sims regarding textbook and instructional materials being proposed for adoption. This will be brought back at a future meeting for possible approval. Anyone have any comments or questions at this point?
Well, Mr.
She's not here.
No, but Mr. Drexler is here. This is the time of year he usually comes to share recommended, you know, course catalog, proposed changes. Obviously, we did this tonight, yeah, homestretch gang. We did this intentionally tonight along with that dual credit conversation because there's implications in that dual credit conversation for the course catalog. So I'll, Doug gets set up here, he's going to just highlight this for you, and as Larry said, this is our typical cascade when we would share the, these proposed potential changes with you. You know, this is that first go at it, give you an opportunity to learn about it, ask questions, and then at a future meeting, it would come back for your approval. So take it away, Doug.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
So we are starting to gear up for course selection for next year, for the 26-27 school year. So we've been working on these proposals, and the goal is to get these under review. They've been reviewed by department chairs, building leadership team, building administration, secondary principals, administrative cabinet. You are the final stop on this train. So again, not looking for approval tonight, but hopefully looking for approval at the November board meeting so that we can get this information into the documents that we send to students and parents. So we're looking at one new, I'm going to call it a new course for now and kind of expand on that later, and modifications to six existing courses. Then I've also included a few brief updates on a variety of our courses as well. So some of these courses are simply remaining the same but opening up to a new grade level, so opening up to a new level, earlier grade level. So I'll kind of lump those together in one statement here. So yearbook, we're looking to open that up to freshmen, it's currently open only to sophomores, and then the following year, take our yearbook leadership course, which is currently open to only juniors and seniors, move that down to be available to sophomores. So we feel that that could be a good elective for incoming freshmen who often lack a lot of elective choices. Most of our elective choices are more prevalent at the junior and senior level. Skipping down a little bit on the document, our social studies campaigns and elections course, again, only currently open to juniors and seniors. We believe that there are students interested in engaging in that course as a sophomore, so we'd like to open it up to them. And then finally, in our wellness department, our dual credit social issues and sports course, currently open to juniors and seniors. Very similarly, we think there'd be an audience for that at the sophomore level. Some more extensive changes in our computer science area. So currently, we offer two computer science courses, Computer Science Principles and then AP Computer Science A. Both of those are year-long courses. And what we've learned about the students who take these courses, a lot of students already have a high degree of proficiency in a lot of these coding skills that are embedded in this class. So although they have an interest in taking some of the upper-level computer science experiences, it would be boring for them to sit through an introductory class that they have already figured out how to do on YouTube and just tinkering around on their own. So we thought it would be important to provide an alternate pathway into these courses that is based on their skill level. So we've revised the course description for Computer Science Principles II to allow students, if they self, kind of self-assess, that they can do these seven tasks in the Python coding system, they can skip Computer Science Principles I. So we think that that is going to be a attractive option for students, and as part of this, we're also taking that year-long Computer Science Principles course and splitting into one and two. So first semester would be level one, second semester would be level two. And then similarly, what this does with the AP Computer Science A course, it allows students as juniors to really register for that class. AP Computer Science A is a course, a lot of seniors try to take that, and seniors often have a lot of other electives that are maybe one section electives. So it adds to that mix of scheduling conflicts. By providing some alternate pathways to get to that course, students can now sign up for AP Computer Science more readily as a junior and, and have really junior year and senior year to take that course. And then there's an alternate prerequisite we're looking at for AP Computer Science A as well, if they have that previous Python coding experience and a grade of B or better in Algebra II. They can kind of bypass that introductory computer science information that we believe they already have the ability to do. So those are the modified courses that we're looking at. There is one
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
So actually, two questions. One, where you're opening up these courses to lower grades, like freshman or sophomore, if there is an oversubscription to this course, is there a priority list for the older students to have first priority for access since the other, since the younger students have an opportunity to take it sometime in the future?
Yes, that's a great question. Really, all of our courses operate that way.
Okay.
So it's very similar to like a college course registration, the more credits you have, you get earlier registration.
You have a priority list.
Correct.
So the other question I had then is for these courses, that these computer courses where you're opening it up to people who may be self-taught in Python or different types of programming, do you have any type of proficiency test that you're going to ask them to take? Because I could walk in and say, sure, I know Python, and then struggle as I get into the, into the actual class and the requirements of that class.
Yes, so not in the course selection process itself, but in the first week of the course, yes.
Okay.
So that there's kind of a double check there, like you said you could do these things, you didn't take Computer Science Principles I, let's have a conversation or show me on this project that you can do that. Yeah. So the new course I referenced is really not a new course because we have offered it, I referenced this in the dual credit conversation we were having earlier, Psychology II. This course we ran up until 2020, and we mothballed it essentially when we started AP Psychology. So this paired with our existing Psychology I would give students the opportunity to earn a dual credit over the course of a school year. So this is a course that we would get off the ground for next year as a new returning course. And then at the bottom of the document, not really for approval, but just for informational updates, I included some information about the dual credit courses that we added for this year. As Mr. Thomas alluded to, AP Calculus BC is currently dual credit, Horticulture is now six college credits instead of three, and Restaurant Entrepreneurship II, that will be running second semester, is now dual credit. And then for 26-27, next school year, we have five new dual credit courses coming online, AP Calculus AB, AP Psychology, AP Statistics, Standard Calculus, and Psychology II. So all of those are in the works with the university and hopefully will be approved sometime late fall or early spring. And then just a couple of courses that have now been approved by the NCAA for students pursuing college athletics, our Critical Approaches to Film Class in the English Department, and our Geometry Concepts and Applications Course in the Math Department. NCAA now recognizes those as contributing to the four-year required courses in the core departments for college athletes or students that want to pursue college athletics after graduation from Geneva High School. And then finally, in our wellness department, the default PE course for juniors and seniors is called Lifetime Fitness, and for the last 20 years maybe, we have run those as separate sections for juniors and seniors with different experiences in each of those courses. juniors and seniors with different experiences in each of those courses. The problem that that creates in a declining enrollment is it really creates some scheduling conflicts with those sections, if only seniors are in certain sections and only juniors are in other sections. So we're actually gonna return to how this course operated 20, 25 years ago and simply combine the juniors and seniors into the same sections of Lifetime Fitness. So they have worked really hard in the wellness department to come up with a two-year curriculum. That two-year curriculum is going to continue to exist, but instead of existing in two separate courses, they're simply going to alternate years. So next year's going to be one curriculum, the following year's going to be the other curriculum. So half the students will get some experiences before the other, but they'll all get the same core experiences in PE. So that's what we're looking at. As course changes for next year, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
I'll get it. Thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate it and the good information. I'm happy to see the dual credit courses growing. Okay, next on the agenda, we have information, board meeting presentation schedule, number two is suspension reports, the Geneva Public Library partnership update. These items are presented for information only. Discussion is not required, but if anybody wants to talk about it, we can. Okay, next-
Could I just throw out briefly on the, I would encourage the board to review the, that information sheet on the public library, you know, that potential joint partnership we're looking at. I think some of the questions that the board asked when we talked about this last meeting in my report, I was able to get some really good information about that, and that's built in to that information right there. So check that out. At our next meeting, the plan would be the director of the library would come and be able to answer any questions if anybody has them. So I want you to be prepared to, if you have questions to ask about that.
Yeah, I was really pleased to see not only is it gonna be the students, but it's also gonna be the staff and the teachers, if I read that correctly.
Yep, absolutely, which is pretty cool.
Anybody else? Thanks for that. Next, my personal favorite, the consent agenda. Item one, the personnel report, resignations, retirements, leave requests, changes in assignment, full-time equivalent, new hires. Item two, monthly financial report. Item three, Amerigus Healthcare Staffing Agreement. Number four, gifts, grants, bequests, $2,484.79. Geneva All Sports Boosters for GHS Sports Annual Letters, Pins, and Fall Senior Night Flowers and Popcorn. Any discussion or do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
Jackie Forbes?
Aye.
Willard Hook?
Aye.
Paul Radlinski?
Aye.
Molly Anne Sari?
Aye.
Stephanie Bellino?
Aye.
Larry Kabine?
Aye. Thank you. Board member comments and reports. Stephanie, would you like to start us off?
Sure. So last week, I was able to attend the Williamsburg PTO meeting. It was a very robust meeting with lots of information and lots of attendance, so it was really great to kind of hear and see what they're going on or what they have going on. I think one of the most important parts of us attending those PTO meetings is that we get to see and interact with parents and really get to understand the culture of the building and the community because the PTO is so integral in building that. And I really want to thank all of our parents who are involved in PTOs. One of the things through the meeting, a lot of this reoccurring themes came up that I've heard across other boosters, across other PTOs, is just how do we get engagement? How do we get parent participation? Or how do we communicate? And I think sometimes that's some stuff that we deal with at the district as well. So no solutions necessarily, but definitely a lot of different approaches and different ways to try to really make that work well. So I appreciate the Williamsburg PTO doing that. And even just us sitting there getting to hear that across multiple buildings helps me as we work on the Communication Task Force or other things to take those messages back as we really think about communication and what that looks like. I also was able to attend the World Language Honor Society induction the other evening. We got, we had a good representation of our German, French, and Spanish programs. So congratulations to all of those students for the hard work it takes to get into the Honor Society. Just nice to see, we spent a lot of time last year talking about world language, so kind of good to see that full circle. I also was able to attend a play at the high school that was put on by the Illinois Theater Honor Society. So the high school has their own little group of an honor society, and they put on a small play called A Visit to the Rainbow Bridge. It was just about 20 kids that are part of the Honor Society. They did a great job overall, just, you know, it was a little bit of a tearjerker at times because it was what you would think it would be, you know, visiting the pets that we may have lost. But great job to all those students and always good to see them taking on new opportunities. This was one where they got to work directly with the playwright and then they got, they're doing this to try to compete. So then they got to have these judges share feedback with them after what they might be able to do. So it was good to see that as a learning process as well. And then congratulations to all of our fall athletes, not just the ones we met tonight. I know that we're wrapping up a lot of the fall sports, and it's a big commitment from the summer through the fall. So congratulations to all of them, even if we didn't all end up going to state. There's so many accomplishments in every single season. And then thank you to Timothy and Letty for speaking tonight. My favorite part of the board meetings is having the students speak, and it's just really great to see them as active community leaders. That is so impressive. I think that I saw Timothy at the city council meeting this week. So nice to see that happening throughout our community as well. But just lots of great things. And thank you to all of the presenters tonight. Lots of great information. And congratulations to our National Merit Scholars as well. That's always one of my favorites as well, to honor those students who have really worked on the academics. But that's it.
Thank you. Willard?
Yes, I just wanted to just make a few comments, well, maybe not a few. The idea is that I appreciate, obviously, just seeing the many students that have a sense of purpose. But then on the other side, listening to the presentation was sad. There are some people, some students who don't have a sense of purpose. And I don't know, it was just in my mind, every time I think about the Red Ribbon Week, it's just on the threshold of Veterans Day. And the thing of it is that as I listen to these presentations from the students, I know they're representatives. Of course, there are many students with their attitude of understanding that we need help for those that are marginalized for various reasons. But I took note of the small steps towards life lessons. So I think about Veterans Day, it always strikes me as, as a veteran and a third-generation veteran, it strikes me when we hear people say, Happy Veterans Day. We have some of these life lessons that students can learn today. You know that there's underreported, but there are about 26 suicides of veterans per day. That's a conservative estimation. And so it's just something to think about, that when I look at the graduation and see the students that are going into the military especially, I think some of the lessons that they learn in high school were carried on board. But unfortunately, like I said, it's just kind of at the threshold that we have this Red Ribbon Week, that Veterans Day is coming up. And of course, it's underreported, the suicide rate and mental health challenges for various reasons. So I think that we have a real obligation to set the foundation. When I was a high school student, I had a mentor, and he gave me six words that were life-changing. He looked at my report card, looked at me, and he just said, and he said six words, you can do better than that. I couldn't argue with him. I mean, it was just kind of a life-changing experience. And sometimes it's just the little things. And I think that this is a very important thing that we, I mean, that was nothing like sad when I was a student, but in high school at least. But I did have a mentor. And I just think that, that just stuck out at me today. And I think that we need to keep that up and recognize these students are just a few years removed. For those who do go in the military, that's just my orientation, that that is something we can help them to make that transition into life because there is a real challenge we have, and it's just underreported. It's very much important for us to recognize that fragility that they are dealing with. Also, I like to recognize those students that, like I said, that have a sense of purpose because that does keep them somewhat balanced. And I like that, that we have so many opportunities for students here in this school district that they have choices that can edify not just themselves, but their teammates. And I thought that was really important, seeing the teamwork that they have, especially with the tennis players. I mean, I know that there are still teammates, but that was just so cool to see that, that they bolster each other. So just a whole smorgasbord of things to choose from. Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah.
Jackie?
Yes, I was able to attend the Technology Task Force meeting. We did get a preview of some of the capital expenses that might be coming up and presented to the board soon. So we've got preview of that. And then also, an update on some of our system updates that are happening at the district level and some of the challenges that they're working through and still are on target for getting the, cut over to the new system complete on time and with a little bit of pain. But we talked through it. We did some therapy and I think they'll be okay. As I mentioned, I did go to the Kishawaki Division meeting last week. It was hosted by St. Charles School District. So got to be in one of their facilities, connect with some other board members from the greater area, and had a nice evening with them. I was able to attend the football game last Friday. It was chilly, but let's face it, we've had some really good football weather the last several years. And so I'm not complaining on that. But it was fun and nice that it was senior night for all of the different groups who are at those football games. So the cheer team, the dance team, the band, and the football players themselves. So it was nice to see everyone get recognized before the game. And then congrats to everyone who came out tonight with their accomplishments. Seeing all their families here, too, is really special because they're very proud of their, their family members who were here tonight and taking their pictures. It's just fun for everyone to come. So it's nice to see them all come. And then also, all of our presentations today, wow. A lot of work goes into all of those. I say that every time, but I do appreciate the time that you spend to put your presentations together, to have people come and talk to us and fill us in on what's happening in our schools. So thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
There we go. Great to see the tradition of excellence, all the kids back here today. I mean, it was fantastic to see so many of them and all the parents here. It's nice to see the room filled on that. And also with the Red Ribbon Week, seeing that again, for me, it's the third or fourth year in a row, and I really am glad to see us continuing to support that as a school district. Want to thank Ms. Han who came in and spoke to us at the public comments to educate the board on the issues that are affecting the young children in our community. It's something that we probably should take a little bit more time in the future to understand what could be done and to support that. And finally, I'd just like to comment and shout out to the theater boosters. They're, on November 13th, 14th, and 15th is the play coming up, and it's Romeo and Juliet this time. I got that right this time. And so please, if, please try to attend if you have an opportunity.
Molly?
I would echo everything that everyone has said. It has been a long meeting, but a super informative one. Lisa, to you and your students, I, as Paul said, I've sat in on this, you know, a few years now, but I so appreciate the evolution of the conversation around how we're approaching this, this subject with our students. And I really just wanted to highlight what Timothy and Letty had talked about of having conversations with your students, for parents, you know, to open the door to that communication and regularly have it. So that way, when more vulnerable topics and harder topics come up, they know they can approach you. Conversation is just so important. So the mental health professional in me really enjoyed that. I also work in higher ed, so Doug, everything that you talked about today, I really enjoyed that, the dual credit. You know, I think this was really an information-heavy meeting that left me feeling really filled with great, you know, ideas and thoughts and time to reflect on what was shared with us tonight. So thank you to everyone, to our students and all that was presented to us tonight. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Molly. I go to, wait till last, so I can say, everything that they said is, is right on. I agree with it. I'm happy to see the courses that allow students to increase their accomplishment. The only thing that nobody mentioned was these lights. Some of you may be aware of this, but we're gonna replace all the light bulbs throughout the district with these LED lights, which use less electricity and which last longer. The savings is phenomenal. And we'll just leave it at that. I am also impressed with the fine quality of our students and their achievements, and I'm happy to see and be a part of that. Next, notices and announcements, there are none. And next, I got to read something else. We have to go into executive session to consider matters pertaining to appointment, employment, compensation, or discipline performance or dismissal of a specific individual who serve as independent contractors in a park recreational or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park recreational educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation for a specific employee that is subject to a Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and must be an open public meeting. Collective negotiation matters between the public body and its concerning salary and schedules for one or more classes of employees. So with that-
Motion to go into an executive session?
Thank you.
Second.
Willard Hook?
Aye.
Paul Radlinski?
Aye.
Molly Anne Sari?
Aye.
Stephanie Bellino?
Aye.
Jackie Forbes?
Aye.
Larry Kabine?
Aye. We'll take a two or three-minute break, for those who need it, and the meeting is closed. So thank you all for coming again.